You there? Okay, getting ready to start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to another cold night this week. I apologize for our lateness in starting our meeting four minutes late, but we had a situation that I had to discuss. But anyway, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation. Reverend Tim Gore will be giving us the great words. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just a very brief announcement. Next Thursday, January 30th, we're going to have our meeting to discuss the spring events. Yes, spring is coming. We do invite any of our leaders to come. And actually, anyone who's here who wants to come join us, we'll be at Timberlake Church God. It'll be a breakfast meeting from 8 to 9. So, but let us pray. And the Father, we are grateful to you for the people that you put in leadership to help us at this time. We know the word says that no one is in authority unless you allow them to be there. And so, we look to these leaders to help us, to guide us and believe us. And we know sometimes, Lord, that we don't always see eye to eye on any particular thing, but we want to come to an agreement that we always do what's best for the community and for the town of Hope Mills. So, we ask you to grant it to us the wisdom that we need and grant it to our leaders the wisdom that they need to help us to reach that goal of being the best possible community that we can be. And we give you praise in all things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going, Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kim Wan-McCray is still resting at home. She is with us by phone tonight. Commissioner Jerry Legg is resting at home after a public safety building walkthrough. We were over there for about a little over two hours, close to two hours, and he's at home resting. So, approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, Mayor Pro Tem votes in the affirmative. The motion passes. We go into official comments. And we'll start off with the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to all our board members and our elected and our viewers from home. The manager's report for this meeting, the Hope Mills Park and Recreation Department have taken registration for our Independence Day cook-off. That will be June 28th, 2025. We're also accepting vendors for our Hope Mills Cotton Trail event in April. The front page of the manager's report lists our employment opportunities. Second page is an outline of our municipal project updates. CSX Railroad has notified us that, starting on February 19th, the crossing at Johnson Street will be closed for approximately five days. Roundabout aesthetics, we are currently still communicating with NCDOT about beautification and our possible sculptures. And the roundabout staff will be partnering with our appearance committee on that endeavor as well. Heritage Park Phase 2, we're engaging a part of grant for the development of Phase 2. Page 3 are our current commercial and residential projects. You also see a second page has been added to the NCDOT construction updates. So, those will continue as well. And before I close out, I have a few announcements. The town of Hope Mills first responders have received their equipment grant from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Town of Hope Mills Police Department has been named the 2025 grant recipient by Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation to receive $18,603 to increase lifesaving capabilities in the town of Hope Mills. The grant will be used to purchase 30 ballistic vests for the department and will ensure our community is better prepared for emergencies. For the past 19 years, charitable donations have been the driving force behind the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, supporting first responders and public safety organizations nationwide. Also, we have had some conversations about three things that I'd like to give updates on. The Jack White Bike Path, as the Municipal Lake Path Construction has been completed. Staff is in the process of the replacement of the Jack White Bicycle Path sign. Staff is awaiting final quotes, but have conveyed design parameters to the design company who initially completed the sign. We will update the board throughout the process, but the town is paying for the sign to be reconstructed and will have it installed soon. But we will keep you updated as we progress forward. Hope Mills Park concessions. Staff is exploring options on the possible renovation of the existing concession stand at Hope Mills Park. As presented at the recent Budget Priorities Dinner, staff has formed an internal committee to develop a campus-wide master plan for the Hope Mills complex. The concessions reconstruction will be included in this initiative. Current options are to, option one is the complete reconstruction of the facility or the full renovation of the existing building. Finally, Ed Haring Park. Park and Recreation Staff is currently working through the Parks and Recreation Committee for a public information session to engage the affected community on the redesign of Eric Park. Staff will update the board as initiative progresses forward. And that does complete my manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Chancellor. Okay, we're going to, before we ask for board member comments, any questions for Chancellor about anything from the manager's report? And we will. And we are. I think that's one of three grants, right?
That is correct. The, we are waiting the notification on the BRIT grant sometime soon. And the Gracie Garrison Grant is the third one that we're waiting on as well. Those are three that we just recently submitted. And so, we're back pretty, pretty good in terms of the grants that we've submitted and the actual awards that we are receiving. So, we'll keep the updates coming as these award letters come in.
I continue to say, there's a lot of grant money on the table. If you don't apply, you'll never have the opportunity to receive the grants. I'm so glad that we've got one. Probably all three. It'd be nice to have all three of them. Okay, Commissioner Molly?
I don't have anything to say, just pardon me.
Commissioner Schueller?
It's good to see everyone here, safe and sound, especially after that snowstorm we had. Just as a reminder, just because you think you know how to drive in snow doesn't mean everyone else does. So, be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Craver?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kim Wan-McCray?
No, I don't have anything either. I just want everybody to stay safe and cool over to the police department for their grant award. I hope that they get the other grants that they submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Only I have a couple of things. We just completed a walkthrough, the board did, of the public safety building. There's been a lot of discussion about the need for the expansion of buildings. And we had a really, really good walkthrough today. Second thing, really glad to be part of the MLK brunch on Monday. That was really good at the Crown. Every year, it gets larger and larger and larger. One of the highlights from Hope Mills this year was the Honor Guard from Southview High School. All-female Honor Guard this year, posting the colors at the Crown. It was, it was a really good event. And it was well, well-attended. Just wanted to highlight that. I hope everybody's been safe for a couple of days. It feels like it's been cold for two months. So, whenever spring comes, we will all welcome it. And it can come tonight. All right, moving on, public comments? Actually, do we have any public comments? No? All right, next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda, item A to F.
A little motion, we have a second? Okay. All in favor? Wait a minute, hold up. Do we have the discussion about an agenda? Did you want to move one?
No, under the consent agenda, the minutes for the January 6th doesn't reflect what actually was on the agenda. The agenda stated that the board would, let me see what it says, that the board would make a motion to authorize our town manager to enter into a contract, oh, a due diligence contract. There was an awful lot of commotion that went on that night, if you remember. After we came back from closed session, the motion was actually, it was made and unanimously passed. We approved the recommendation to purchase 5770 Lady Bird Lane for $51,000, then $510,000. We never did go in and approve the town manager to enter into the due diligence contract. So, at the getaway of the 14th meeting, Mayor Pro Tem McRae corrected that. So, we're not actually buying the building.
Okay, so...
We just need to correct the minutes.
Do you want the minutes corrected, the January 6th, 2025 regular meeting?
Yes.
Corrected.
Commissioner Craver, my recollection and my notes are what I reflected in the minute. I'd be happy to go over the audio with you at another time, but it's my understanding that that was the motion that was made based on what was on the agenda.
No, the mayor came out and read what was on the agenda. But the motion started out, I'd like to make a motion, let me see, to approve the recommendation to purchase 5770 Lady Bird Lane for $51,000. Mayor said, no, $510,000. And it was seconded by Commissioner Legg, and we all approved it unanimously. And that is on the tape. I think minute 1:43.
Commissioner Craver, can we, can we remove from the consent agenda A? Can we, can we just remove the January 6th, 2025 regular meeting minutes? And when goes back February 3rd?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Okay. And if we do that, then we can go ahead and approve the consent agenda as planned. You have a...
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Molly would have to amend his motion to, to...
Now, I'll do that. I'll amend my motion to approve item B through F and remove item A and have it brought back at the next meeting.
February 3rd?
February 3rd.
And that would only be the January 6th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
The only, the only item A will approve, make a motion to approve item B through F and remove item A, so you have it through on the February 3rd.
Okay. Any further discussion? The board had a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed. Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem voted in his run. Commissioner Legg? Are you back with us? Dr. McRae?
Yeah, I'm back. I hung up on it.
That's fine, okay. Okay, so, moving on to end of consent agenda. We're into whole business. Very good fun. I think there may have been three items of whole business that our town manager just covered in his manager's report. New business under item 6A, appointment of Dr. Anthony Zett Faurier to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee under tab 7.
Do we have a motion? Not much of a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion about this appointment? Seeing none? All in favor? Everyone voted affirmative, including Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kim Wan-McCray. Item B, authorizing the town manager to execute the sale of the cell towers to Symphony Wireless for $481,000. $813.20 due upon closing. That document is under tab A, and I believe Drew is that's the provision.
Okay, what you have for you tonight is three different options of what to do with our cell tower that's up here behind Town Hall. You've got the information there. Option one is to stay with the leasing company that currently is leasing the towers. But their renewal, they want to lower the amount to almost half from $1825.05 a month to $949.02 a month. And they'd like to extend it from the current expiration date of April of 2032 to April of 2062. They want to do a 30-year extension on the lease in order to be able to give long-term leases to tenants that they would like to put on the tower. That is why they want to do a 30-year addition to the rest of the seven years we have now on that lease. The other option, that is with Crown Castle, the current lease holders. Another offer that we have is from Symphony Wireless, where they want to flat-out purchase the tower in its entirety. They've given us two different offers to purchase it. One is just an outright purchase for $481,813.20, which will be paid upon closing, which usually takes a couple of months. So, if we did that, then it's, just say it's late January now, February, March, probably late March, then we would set a closing date. Option two is to give us a down payment of $394,210.80 paid upon closing and another $24,638.18 in four annual installment payments for the next four years, which that would total $492,763.50. So, you have my recommendation there, but it's totally up to the council what you would like to do. We have to do one of the options, either extend the lease or sell it outright. So, there's the three options that we have. You have all the information there. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Drew.
That's as simple as I can make it.
It appears that, and I'll leave office with a couple of questions. It appears that it's under option, is it option one, that the current company we have now not only wants to extend the lease, but they want to cut the lease in half beginning this month?
Yes, it would be, once we approve it, it would start immediately at that new rate. And I asked them about that and told them, could we at least keep the current rate till the end of the current contract? And then if we extended, it would start then. Their answer to that was that, right now, they only have one tenant on the tower. And they're losing money, so that's why they wanted to drop the amount. But they also offered us, for each new tenant that they got, we would get a certain percentage of that income. And I asked them, give me an average of what that would be. It's very, very small amount of money we would get per tenant. And it doesn't make up that difference. Unless they were to fill the tower with 20 tenants. But I don't see that happening, because it only has one tenant now. And I said, well, why aren't you trying, if you're losing money, why aren't you trying to get tenants now?
Right.
Without having to get us a percentage of that. And they are, but it's difficult. So, I didn't really push it, but that was the response that they gave.
Do you think that the tower might be obsolete? And they're just, there's just no interest in, in that tower? Because I know that on the water tower, we have a tremendous amount of antennas that's on the water tower. Of course, we don't own that. But that's a higher tower. And it looks like to me that's where any future customers that wanted to use something high would go to the water tower. But, so they weren't interested in selling it either?
They weren't interested in purchasing it. They only believe, I mean, purchasing it. Because we did offer them, did they want to match or come back with something else? And they said, no, they are only a leasing company. They do not buy. So, which the other company asked them, were they interested in leasing it? And they said, we don't lease, we only purchase.
Yeah, I was following a question.
Yeah.
Now, would they, if, if we were to sell the tower to them, would they allow that, an antenna to go on the tower for more than a radio?
What I would like to do is get the antenna on in the next two months while we're still on. That way, it's already there and we don't have to ask them.
Can do it. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Schueller?
No, even if one would get the antenna on there, as far as we know, would they give us a problem?
I've already asked them.
Oh, okay.
I said, if there is an existing public safety antenna on this tower, would that be a problem? They said, not at all. That's why I would like to get it on there while we're still on.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It could be different if we were asking to do it after it's sold.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Craver?
Would they start charging us rent for our, for the motor powered tower being put on the hood?
The antenna?
The antenna.
No, I asked them that, and they said they would not.
Okay. Make sure you write that down.
I asked them to get that into us in writing. And they said, once they go, if they're able to purchase it, then there's no point in getting to us writing, because right now, y'all haven't approved
what, what option we're going to take.
So, I would get that right. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Molly, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the sale from the cell tower to Symphony Wireless for $481,813.20 due upon closing.
Okay, so, the motion is, is for option one of the three options, which is, option one of the purchase, of the purchase. Yes. So, the option would be option one, purchase the tower at the price of $481,813.20. That's the motion. That's the second. Dr. McRae? Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McRae, do you have any comments before I call for the vote?
Down there.
I do have this comment from, can we bring back a county school council and get that antenna at the next meeting? Get that antenna to be...
Uh, we talked to Deputy Chief Rorwer, and he said, or if you got a number...
We're actually waiting on, for the...
Okay, he said it would be give or take $9,000.
Y'all gonna bring that back to us?
Do we need to bring it? Or is that, I think that's just operational. We can just...
Take one, buddy.
Just, just...
But as soon as we get a quote, we'll get it scheduled to be done.
Let me, let me make, so we're gonna, the fire department will assume that out of their budget?
When I bring, hopefully in February, I can get it for the February 3rd meeting.
Okay.
I would like these offer funds picked for that, so it won't have to come out of your current operation.
Okay. I think that would answer. That completes your question, too.
But if I don't get that ready for the February 3rd meeting, then it will be a one-to-march.
And if we don't approve this tonight, it won't be ready for February 3rd.
Don't worry about doing that yet. You'll get that later.
Okay.
Because we need the amount first.
All right, all in favor?
Point of, point of clarification. Did you guys include in the motion where the funds would need to earmark to?
I was gonna come back up with that.
Okay.
Yep. Let's do the, let's do, there's two motions. So, we'll do this one first, then we're gonna earmark with it. The $481,000 comes in. Okay, so, all in favor? Seeing everybody put it in the affirmative, including Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McRae. Second part of this, so the motion carries, is what line item are we gonna designate this $481,813.20?
My recommendation is that we designate it a reserve notes fund in a capital project fund, only to be used in the purchase for future projects.
Okay, so, we put it in a separate line item. It'll earn its own interest. It can only be used for capital improvement projects.
Yeah.
So, it will not go back into the general fund. But it will go into this line item.
That way, in the future, if it's ever to be spent, it has to come back to the board as a budget amendment to move from a reserve fund back into whatever project we choose to spend it on.
Just like we were doing offer, offer fund.
Exactly like that.
Very, very same format. Okay, any questions about, about the line item? Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McRae, you have any questions about the line item?
Uh, no, sir, I don't.
Okay, do we have a motion?
It would actually be from motion to be...
To place the funds into a capital project reserve fund.
Capital project reserve fund. So, that's how I make my motion.
That's the motion. You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody voted affirmative, including Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kim Wan-McCray. So, we sold the cell tower tonight, and we put it in a separate line item only for capital improvement projects. And that's the right thing to do with this town with this amount of money. All right, moving on to item 7. Thank you, Drew. Item 7 reports on information items under tab 9. Monday, January 27th is Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Also on Monday, the 27th, let me make sure I get my time right. At the chapel at 6:30 is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Also, at the chapel at 7:30 on Monday, the 27th, is the Christmas Committee. And it's been a lot of discussion about Christmas lights. Then on Tuesday, the 28th, is the Appearance Commission. That's also at the chapel at 6:30. And then we're back here at our next meeting on Monday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM. And there's some meetings that the board will have prior to 7:00 PM. And I believe they've already, already been noticed.
No, not yet.
Not yet. There's, there's one action that I need to ask the board. I should have done it under board member comments. The February 17th meeting, the regular meeting on February 17th, Monday, our, our Cumberland County Legislative Delegation team have decided to join us for a budget presentation at 6:00 PM on February 17th to listen and to take part in what priorities we would like for them to consider funding. To do that, we'll need to cancel the regular meeting on February 17th and schedule and go ahead and approve, approve the Cumberland County Legislative Delegation Priorities Meeting. So, that's one we'll ask the board if they would like to cancel the regular meeting, which starts at 7:00. And approve the delegation meeting that starts at 6:00.
And I'll say, I'll do, I'll need this.
Nope, just make the motion. Make the motion to cancel the regular meeting and replace it with the priorities meeting.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Is that, get it up there? I'm gonna need to be more detailed.
No, that's sufficient. You just need a second.
Okay. Second? Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any discussion about February 17th?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor? Everyone votes affirmative, including Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McRae. So, with that, we got the last item, is staff comments?
Yes, just briefly, two things. I stand corrected, I did already send a notice out for that.
for that February third meeting for the strategic planning that will be in here at four PM that day. And also just for future, if there are any corrections with the minutes, I would just appreciate if you will let me know beforehand, so that way if there is something that needs to be corrected, I can get it to you before the meeting and then that way you don't have to bring it back to a future meeting. But I will look into it and look into the audio and just make sure that my notes are in accordance with what you please.
And now come back February third. Any other staff comments? No? One once, one twice, nothing? That's all we need. Motion to adjourn, second. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and everyone, please, please stay warm over the next few days.